Mr. Chairman, we are live.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. Our first agenda item is not an action item. This is a Fair Board Review presentation. Casey, come on up.
Thank you for coming.
Of course, thank you for having me.
It was a wonderful fair.
Wasn't too bad, huh? Glad I have a copy for you to sign.
That'd be great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh-oh, more numbers.
I think we were just talking about this, weren't we?
Ooh.
Ugly.
It was a one-sentence summary of that.
Well, I would love to. Thank you again for having me. This is just a summary of every expense and all income that was made by the fair this year.
An all income?
Yes.
I don't see any income on here.
Well, fair and rodeo part for the contestants. On the second page, you'll see the contestant checks for $5,760 and contestant cash for $7,960. You'll also see the Friday stands, Saturday stands, beer garden for Friday and Saturday as well.
You lost money in the beer garden?
We did not lose money, no.
Top one.
That's our check for...
The beer.
The beer. So, we paid $1,699, but we made...
Income, there you go, your next line.
Oh, just over $8,000.
Yes.
Holy cow, though, a net loss of $5,500. So, the fair, because they have no income...
So, I grouped it into what we talked about at our last meeting. 4-H fair, open class, rodeo, donations. So, for the fair, the $6,500 that goes to 4-H, I also broke out Randy Redmond. I just divided the days for fair cleanup for 4-H and rodeo. And then the tent rental, because the rodeo actually didn't use the tents this year. They were gone, so I didn't make a percentage of that go to the rodeo.
Casey, going down in the rodeo operations, all those different folks under entertainment, is that awards because they won that?
That's their payout, yeah.
This is all payout?
Yeah, and I want them to... I wanted you to see everything, so you weren't like, "Well, what does that mean?" Broke it down, so it's crystal clear.
This is great, fabulous job on all of this.
So, there was a loss. You know, we needed about $5,000 to cover, didn't support itself. But Friday was not a great night for the rodeo. Mediocre night. There was some confusion with the dates, and I wholeheartedly believe that it would have supported itself had it not been a little slow on Friday. And also, Saturday, we were turning people away. Again, as we know, we would have had probably 100, 150 more seats sold had we been able to have the room for them.
So, didn't we approve stands?
Yes.
Okay, did we get those in?
We will be purchasing them for next year, but they weren't...
They weren't there?
It wasn't ready for this year.
And how many? Do you remember how many more?
Well, we have quite a... We have a little cushion in our budget right now, so depending on what other stuff needs to be done, we'll just have to decide how many. I believe it's almost $10,000 for a set.
And how many butts in the seat go for that set, do you know?
I don't remember that right now, I apologize. I can get back to you about that, though.
So, it looks like the rodeo lost...
The rodeo cost...
Fifty-four eighty-eight.
It cost us $5,500 over what it made, what it brought in.
The rodeo did.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, when you're looking at this, we're looking at fair operations, let's see. A little front sheet to that.
Sure.
In the fair operations, you only have three lines. 4-H.
There's no income for the fair operations. They don't charge a fee to get in?
No, so... But 4-H contributed something here, $6,500.
That's a negative.
That's all supposed to have a negative in front of it.
Sorry, it's in...
In parentheses, yeah. It's in parentheses, it's a negative.
Okay, parentheses are negative. Someplace else, a negative is a negative.
You're right, I apologize for that.
Yeah, so, anyway, so those lines up on top then are what it cost us to have a fair?
It's what the fair and rodeo contributes that the county gives us. We contribute that much just for the 4-H portion. We give $6,500 check to the 4-H coordinator for her expenses. We then pay for the tent rental, and then Randy Redmond did the fair cleanup, and so we paid him as well. And so, that was for those days, that those things were used.
Yeah.
So, where is the contribution, basically, your tax levy? Because last year, you guys got $35,000 or $50,000? Did we give them $50,000 last year?
I didn't include... I didn't... I just wanted to sum up what fair and rodeo was, what it cost us, what we made. I didn't... I wasn't thinking a total budget overview.
Okay, that's perfect.
So, open class, open class is the same thing. It's all expense.
Yes.
Okay. So, we have two lines there, fourteen, and two fifteen, two seventeen or so.
So, on the bottom, that is a synopsis of the whole thing.
Okay, yeah. So, Casey, would you say most of the donations, you just... You know, the individual businesses, that just went into the overall budget? Or does it just go to 4-H, or does it just go to rodeo?
Going to fair and rodeo, because it's for...
Fair and rodeo, so it's all of it.
But it's sponsoring the rodeo, sponsoring royalties, so we get the banners, we put them up, so basically, that's going into our operations pot.
So, if I look at this, technically, in any given year, I mean, this was not a good year, but even on a bad year, so we lost $20,000 at the event itself. However, the taxpayers provided a base of $35,000, so...
So far, though, Commissioner Allen, sorry to interrupt you, we've only paid $16,737, so there's another payment due to the Fali County Fair.
What was the total, Doug, thirty? Thirty-five?
It looks like $48,000.
One second, I'd like you to clarify. We lost $19,000, you just said?
Your expenses to operate the fair and rodeo?
Yes.
Was $19,000, the $5.62. So, the county, however, provides a tax base to make sure that this can continue on. So, if we were to look at it holistically, what we really should have levied for this year, for the tax base, is $20,000 to make it zero sum. Your expenses were 20, we should have levied 20. If we are taking care of the facilities, what are the other expenses that the Fair Board has? Those are the next questions.
That doesn't leave any room for purchases, for tractors, stands.
Correct.
So, that, yeah, if you're only talking about operating the way it is, yeah, $20,000.
And I guess that's what the next part of that is, your budget? Because that's what we have to provide to the taxpayers?
Right.
We're actually asking for extra money, because their budget next year is, they're going to be purchasing these types of capital equipment or capital expenditures, so that people don't look at this and go, "Well, where's the other $15,000 or $18,000 that we provided taxpayer funding?"
Just so I understand, when I came in and did the budget a couple of months ago, and I provided what it cost us and what we would like to put in, showing why we needed that, are you asking for that again for this year?
No, you did it for this year. I guess what I'm clarifying for the public at large that's out there listening is, yes, it cost us $20,000 to put on the fair and rodeo. The extra money that we provided is going toward the capital expenditures that were listed in your budget. That's why that budget is so critical.
Correct.
So that taxpayers don't wonder where those extra funds are going. So, and this year, I think a lot of those will be going towards stands, so that next year, we don't have such a large loss, we can get more people into the rodeo.
Well, and you were talking too about maybe combining them all in the same week, instead of having two separate weeks. I think the last time we talked, is that still?
So, at the last Fair Board meeting, they discussed, we actually want to do the rodeo the weekend prior to the 4-H fair. So, setup's usually on Saturday, so we would do our rodeo Friday and Saturday. They would have Sunday, horse shows would start on Monday through Wednesday, so it's not the two weeks, so there's not so much confusion, so people visiting. So, I think that will rectify, as well as continue to help with the parking situation. So, that's the plan for the next year.
Nice.
It'll be the first full week, the rodeo will be the weekend before, rather than the weekend after.
Well, that's an interesting kind of a concept, but it seemed like always in the past, rodeo was always kind of like a finale or something, and...
That's true, but we don't have the parking down there. Even this year, it was completely packed with the contestants. They were lined up out, it was completely packed, without any of the 4-H families, without the campers, without their cars, so it's really not something that can be done feasibly with 4-H in the grounds.
That's my concern about having the rodeo the weekend before the fair starts, is they're going to take up all the parking spots for the 4-H contestants.
4-H doesn't come in until Monday.
They'll be done with the fair in those... Okay.
Be done with the rodeo before the fair comes.
So, I need a little copy, Doug, because you said we provided $48,000 a year. You lost $19,500. To me, there should be another $28,000 left.
There is, for sure.
Okay.
This is just the review of the week.
So, we're still really pretty good.
And then, to the finale, they're going to do the junior rodeo on Saturday after 4-H.
Oh.
So, there will be...
Okay, it'd actually be a rodeo on each end of it.
Right.
Yeah, that'd be kind of interesting.
Awesome.
We used to have a login show attached to it.
Well, and so, the question becomes, we... They're wanting more stands. Does this $28,000, you know, buy those stands? Because then, the fair and rodeo board owns those stands, versus the county not providing as much, just covering whatever the expenses are, and we put the money into the facilities so that it is the county's, and there is no discrepancy in the future on who owns what. That's my concern.
I think that's a very good valid point. I think the county should buy those stands, because we're going to have other events in there besides fair and rodeo.
Yeah.
My concern is that, are they going to raise the stands up to see over the fence?
So, major things have to be done this year. The fence around the arena broke to pieces. It's being held up with two-by-fours and shoddy. We had bulls out up in Ameritidal. We... It was, somebody went over the fence, broke the fence, hurt a rider. It's completely rotting and falling apart. So, this year, this year and next year, things have to drastically be done, or it's just not a safe venue to have that type of event at. So, I think that will be taken into consideration when we get the stands, how things will work and what heights and...
And I feel like we should hope, replace the fence as well. That should not be a fair or rodeo expense.
Should be part of county property, yeah.
Well, right, because like last, when you guys had the memorial ride, that's not a fair thing, so...
No, I think the discussion is, at this moment in time, is, do we create... Or, do we even send that other $16,000? I don't think we do, because...
Can I say something really fast?
Sure.
I don't want this to be the base, because we do have plans. We needed to buy more beer, we ran out. That was an issue. We... There's expenses, we would like to make it more fair, right? So, we would like to spend a little bit more than what we spent this year. Every year, it's just a learning experience, we're getting better and better. So, I don't want to be held to this $19,562.
Understandable, yeah.
No, and I think that that's a floating number.
Okay.
Alls you gotta do is put in, you know, what you need, but also, that's part of that budgeting process.
Right.
These are the things we're going to invest in. But I also don't just want to give you the full $48,000, and then us take on the responsibility of also purchasing the stands, and also providing, you know, that fence and everything else. I mean, they're...
Well, the issue there, sure, is that there's some things that the 4-H has to buy at the beginning of the year out of that extra money. The fair, the books, there's a lot of things, supplies, they need, so we're going to have to... We have to give them some of it.
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
I don't know what those expenses are, but...
We need better signage this year. We need to pay to have that sign put above the road again, and that's not something that we can do as volunteers. That really is something that's going to require a company with a lift shutting the road down, so that's going to be an expense that wasn't this year. Posters throughout the county or the communities, another thing, you know, just little things like that that really need to be tidied up to make it more presentable, and you would better.
It almost seems to me, just like, correct me if I'm wrong, but you got kind of two issues going on. You got an operating expense for the rodeo, which is at $48,000, basically, and then you got rodeo facilities, I mean, not rodeo, but fairground facilities, and it almost seems like we should separate those out. And I agree with Commissioner Allen, that probably the county should be stepping up for that.
Well, the issue is...
On that facility part of it.
The issue is, Commissioner Allen, is that we haven't really... We don't have a background of what has been put into the fairground for maintenance, because we really haven't replaced any fencing. We haven't updated any buildings, other than paint and hardware.
Right.
So, they're menial costs, so it's kind of hard to just throw a number at that right now, without having a quote done by a contractor.
I think we've got two or three years' worth of work together here to figure out, you know, what the costs are. And it might be that some year, you guys want to put in a little carnival, or, you know, something else to enhance the experience. We need bigger fairgrounds probably to do that, but I'm just saying, for the tax base, I don't want to go out to the taxpayers and say, "I charged you $48,000 over here for the fair. That money is sitting in an account somewhere, because you guys aren't expending it at that rate, and also, we're charging you, in our general budget, for another $100,000, whatever improvements on the fairgrounds." That's not fair to the taxpayers.
Right, I hear you.
So, the $50,000, I guess it's $50,000 that we have been budgeting every year for the fairgrounds now, for improvement to the facilities. That's probably what I'm hearing is going to be a fence this year, and so, new fencing and just a little bit of stands.
Yeah. My feeling is, let's leave the $48,000 alone and keep going like we've been going. You guys know you'll have money to get the program started next year, January, because all those books, all the ribbons, all that stuff costs money, and you got to get it ahead of time. And then come to us with a bid from someone to put in a new fence, someone to build raised stands, whatever you guys think you want to do. Honestly, if it comes in way too much, we're going to say, "No, you're going to have to scale back."
But they're going to say, "Oh, it's not their responsibility, that's Scott's responsibility."
Yeah, but I think working with Scott, because you guys know what you need, Scott doesn't know.
We're getting the idea for Scott.
Right.
We're just getting the information, the plan, and he'll partake in the...
Yeah. And I think that's only fair. I would definitely look at other fair and rodeo venues to see what they've done for fences and how they've managed to get the grounds up higher, the grandstands up higher, you know, those kind of things, to get a good idea. They may even have grandstands that are raised up. I know I've been to some rodeos where all the pins are underneath the grandstands, and so that they can, you know, have pins now at the end, you can have grandstands there too. So, there's a lot of opportunities, but you guys are going to have to do that work, because Scott, he's got too many things on his plate to do that.
Okay.
And then come to him and say, "Hey, this is what we want. This is our wish list." And if you got some prices on it, then, okay, we can afford to do this and this this year, and then maybe next year, we can do this and this.
Okay.
I think that's how it's going to work.
What do you guys have in reserves, Casey?
I'm sorry, what?
What do you have in reserves?
I believe it's around 18 right now.
Technically, they're due...
Another check?
Well, we've got one in August, but I haven't picked it up from Rita yet.
You know, I was looking at it, seems to me like, no matter what we do, the county should own the facilities.
Yep.
We should own them and maintain the facilities. I think the fair, running a fair, is a use of those facilities, but it's a whole different... Well, and I know that I've been approached by the Rick District to build an ice rink in it.
Yeah, they just emailed me today.
And they want to basically kind of scoot the dirt out and build a kind of a burn there around the edge of the arena and then flood it. I don't have a problem with that. I think it would work great for the grounds and for the ice rink. That, they have lighting, everything is their... They need, but we're going to have to work those details out about, hey, who's paying the power bill for those lights, if it's going to be on, you know, those kind of things.
Right.
But we can get more use out of that facility, is what I'm trying to say. It is a county.
Right.
It's a county responsibility, in my opinion, anyway.
On a positive note, everyone was very receptive of the price increase in admission and in beer. Nobody found it in it, so that was good to hear, and, yeah.
Where did you, the ambulance, end up going? Did it stay in the same spot, even though we took that out, or?
No, the back, by the old loading chute.
Also, on the other end, okay. As long as it was there and available, that's the big issue, okay? And Casey, do you know, on the southwest corner, isn't there a fire hydrant right there too, as well, of the Bucking, or that end of the arena? There's a power pole there.
There's a power pole there, I don't know about a fire hydrant. Don't know.
I'll drive by and look tonight on the way home, see, because they'll need that water, which means you're going to have to work with the city on paying for that water.
Right.
But that's okay, those are things that we can work out.
Honestly, and I kind of feel like we need almost like an architect to go in and look at this facility and figure out what it looks like, what that footprint looks like for the future.
It's hard to throw money at a brand-new fence if... Do you guys have any other questions?
This is really great, thank you. This is the first one I've seen. Ten years, it really made sense to me. I can't believe you run a fair like this for $20,000. Yeah, that's phenomenal.
It wasn't bad, I don't think, I mean...
Nope, very efficient. You know, it's a week-long event.
Right, right.
It's pretty good.
Thank you so much. I mean, this is just incredible.
Thank you. I'll get that email to you later, Doug.
Thank you.
Okay, our next agenda item is an action item, Mr. Approve Mr. Austin Brown to McCall P&amp;Z. Commissioner Austin, please come on up to the mic and give us a little history about yourself.
I'm Austin Brown, I live up in McCall, born and raised. Left for a while, and I was actually born and raised in construction. My dad said, "You know, you got to get out of here. You're not doing construction, you're going to go do something else." So, I had the opportunity to leave. I've lived a number of places, and once I started having kids, I realized that McCall's where I wanted to raise them, so I came back. I'm currently a custom home builder up in McCall area, and saw an opportunity with the P&amp;Z and figured out to apply and, you know, put my resources in towards that.
Have you ever been involved in any other boards? You know, boardsmanship and Robert's Rules of Orders and all that kind of stuff, or?
I don't, I'll be a rookie for that.
Okay.
But I learn quick, so...
One of the things you realize as a P&amp;Z commissioner is that you make some pretty hard decisions, and sometimes people don't like how you decide, and sometimes you can lose friends in this position. Are you willing to go through that?
Oh, absolutely. I think there's a right and a wrong for things, and we all need to come together for, you know, a growth plan for the area, and takes what it takes to do it. Ruffling feathers is about the only way to get things done.
Tell me your focus. We do have... So, the Land Use Planning Act actually drives a lot of decisions that the Planning and Zoning Commission actually has to have and follow, and so, there... Right now, there's a lot of individuals in the area that just want growth to stop, want to put a building moratorium on, which is not feasible, nor is it legal. Tell me your focus. What is it that you hope to accomplish while you're on the commission?
Yeah, so, things are going to grow no matter what, and right now, we're definitely booming, so things are moving quickly. There's a lot of money coming into town. I think the focus would be to build smart. McCall has seen ups and downs, and when it's up, it's really up, and when it's down, it's really down, and that can change growth patterns. And I think over the years, we've seen McCall develop in different directions, and it's a bit scattered, and I think being on there, I think the focus would be to retain it back and try to come up with a focused growth goal across the whole town, so it's healthy for everybody. It's not necessarily going to be good for people who own land in certain places, but I definitely think McCall's going to grow to a point where it needs a commercial district and designated residential and multifamily, and I think just looking at each proposed build or growth throughout the town strategically, and making sure that it's thoughtful, versus just because somebody comes with a plan to build, doesn't mean they should be approved if it's affecting neighbors in other parts of the town that we want to grow into a better place. If that makes sense.
Well, have you studied the Lupa laws and what you can and cannot do? Have you been introduced to those at all?
No, and I'll start studying. I'll get up to par on all of it, but...
Austin, I appreciate the fact that you want to step up and serve. I think this is an important part of everybody's function as civil service, volunteering. It's not easy, I can tell you that for sure. The issues that you're going to run into are going to catch you on the street, in the grocery store, in the mailbox, and places you don't even think people are around, and you're going to get challenged a lot. Do you feel like you can honestly say to folks that, you know, "I'm not going to discuss this here in the grocery store, this is not the place or time," or "I'm not going to reveal any secret inside information," or get yourself in trouble that way? Those are the kind of things that you're going to... And I'm sure Brian's going to train you up on some of this stuff, which you can and can't do, but it's a very important position, and it could lead into future things like city council and maybe county commissioner someday. So, those are the kind of things you got to think about, of what kind of reputation and legacy you're leaving behind you, and, like I said, it's not easy.
Yep.
But it's very rewarding when it works, when it all comes together, and I just appreciate the fact that you're willing to step up and take that on.
Absolutely.
So, what was it again? What's your name again, I'm sorry?
Austin, Austin Brown.
Austin. Austin, you understand the difference between ex parte and conflict interest? Yeah, I think this is what Mr. Chairman Asbrooke's kind of leaning, or trying to kind of caution you on. Well, ex parte is kind of making decisions outside of the body. I mean, your body would be the Planning and Zoning Commission, so if you're discussing something with a neighbor, and if you're already expressing your opinion on it, you're pretty much just making an unofficial decision outside that body. So, when I'm talking to you about something that I'm concerned about as a neighbor, you know, how you're going to respond to me? I mean, it's one thing to say, "Well, I just can't talk about it," which is a safe thing to do, but another one, but there are some, there are points when people do need to know things about the procedure, where to go, who to talk to, that kind of thing. So, ex parte is just one of those things that, you know, I think there's, it's a Latin term for kind of, you know, working outside the framework of decision-making. So, you have to be careful about opinions that way, but you can talk about it, but you can't talk about your opinions, you can talk about process, maybe.
Yep, absolutely.
Things like that.
Yep.
You can't talk about a specific location, you can talk about generalities.
Yeah, well, we...
Anytime you get to a specific...
This has to go here, and then here, and then here to be approved, or whatever.
Uh-huh.
You know, those kind of things. But I think a lot of times, we get in trouble on that. I was on the Planning and Zoning for the county for 19 years, and, yeah, and there was a couple of times I had to recuse myself. You know, those are the kind of things, and people do watch for that kind of stuff. And, anyway, you do get challenged that way. Conflict interest is just obviously, if you've got some, you know, a dog in the fight, so to speak.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah, those are the kind of things that.
And I'm sure in a small town, it's easy, you know, to be caught in those situations.
But anyway, it's always great to have people that are saying, oh, hey, I'd like to be in that conversation.
The law reads now, if you get caught doing that, it's a thousand dollar fine. Anything over a thousand dollars, you're responsible for personally.
Yeah, so.
So the city, I think, probably has a charge for the first thousand. I know the county does, but anything after that, it's on your dime. So you got to be careful by getting yourself into trouble. And, um, it's really easy to get into trouble on these boards. Do you have any questions for us?
No, like I said, it's, I'm super, very new. And, um, I learn fast, so once I dive into things, I pick it up quickly. All this information's helpful. I mean, I definitely don't want to.
I learned really slow. That's why I was there for nineteen years.
It's changing. I will tell you that realtors and builders get beat up for being on these commissions. Not going to lie.
Yeah.
I'm a Realtor. Um, but I also feel like sometimes we have the most accurate information. And so I think it's a positive to have people with experience in these realms, sitting on these boards. You're one vote of five. And so your vote is no more, you know, you have no stronger vote than the people around you.
Yeah.
So if there are concerns, but your expertise, I think, helps in this, in this realm. Especially if we're going to have managed focused growth for the future.
Hmm, absolutely.
Many times people, you know, look, people go, why don't you get on there and you can, you know, you may, but you know what? You are working within the framework of ordinances. And, um, court plans, various things like that. And, uh, it's, it's really kind of an interesting business. And that's great. I think you'll enjoy it.
Well, and I think Brian will keep you out of trouble.
Yeah, I think you, yeah.
Although he gets us in trouble once in a while. He's pretty good about keeping the city P and Z online, so.
Well, thank you for stepping up. It is hard, um, to get people to volunteer for these types of commissions. And so I, I commend you for doing that.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Hey, this is an action item, so I need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion. Will you appoint Mr. Austin Brown to, uh, the Joint Planning and Zoning Commission for McCall, Idaho?
Second.
Who's a second in all favor? Please say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
If you need any help or concerns or calls, I would call that because he's really a professional P and Z guy.
I talked to Brian. Brian's your guy.
Brian's your guy.
Brian's your guy. Right, he's, uh, remember, he's non, non-voting one, but he's really important to you.
Who's, who's, uh, position became available?
Scott Tunnel.
Well, Scott stepped down.
All right, well, welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So is Kelly coming, Kevin? No, it's you?
It's me.
Okay, so our next agenda item is an action item. This is acceptance of a donation from Kelly's Whitewater Park for nine eleven education. Mr. Cooperry, I'll turn it over to you.
Ben Hirsch, clerk. Um, so Kelly, through staffing, has to work, uh, graveyard tonight, so she asked if I could come up and talk to you guys instead. So I'm a lot taller and uglier, so sorry about that. Um, so anyway, um, the sheriff's office is doing kind of a community outreach, more of a community oriented policing, um, going out to schools and talking to children and everything. And we're doing it more than just the patrol side. We brought dispatch into it where they could come and explain when to call nine-one-one, when not to call nine-one-one, who's on the other end of nine-one-one, what a nine-one-one call generates, what a waste of time, a nine-one-one that's not necessary, and what that could do to a real emergency on the road. So we're trying to teach these kids at a young age what it means to call nine-one-one and what that triggers. Um, so some of the gals in dispatch, a couple of them came up with this plan of doing an outreach with the schools where there's an art contest that, that gets used every year. And so dispatch was asking different people in the community to donate some stuff to put in a basket for a prize for every year for these kids. Kelly's Whitewater heard about it and of course they're not going to go shopping. And so what they did is they sent in a very generous thousand dollar check. And so I'm not asking you for money on this occasion. I'm asking you to accept money to be put into the sheriff's trust. And then our dispatch gals can go and get stuff to fill out this basket for the winning prize for, uh, the schools.
And I'm assuming dispatch, you guys will write a thank you to KWP.
Absolutely.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we accept the donations from Kelly's Whitewater Park for a thousand dollars for nine eleven education.
Second.
Who's a second in all favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You guys have a good day.
Good day. Twice in one day.
Had to go to jail the first time though. And our next agenda item is not for another twenty-five minutes, so we're going to mute and we'll see everybody back here at two o'clock.